All right, let's come back to order. Supervisor Fisher, I mean Supervisor Hess, would you lead us in invocation, please?
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, we opened this meeting this evening by pausing to give thanks to you for your many blessings and to ask for your guidance in our deliberations. On this spring evening, as we see the apple blossoms and orchards throughout the county and the other signs of new life that this season brings, we're reminded that you are the Creator and the giver of life. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedoms provided in our Constitution, including the freedom to assemble here tonight, and we offer our thanks to those who serve and have served in our armed forces defending those freedoms. And Father, as local residents and thousands of visitors gather in our area this week to celebrate Apple Blossom Festival, we ask that you keep them safe as they enjoy the beauty of this county, and we thank you for the countless volunteers whose dedication to their community makes this event possible. Father, we ask for patience and understanding and wisdom as we deal with the issues that are before us tonight. Give us curiosity of mind so that we are open to the perspectives that others can offer us. Help us to see the similarities that bind us together to create a better future for our county and its citizens. We ask your blessing on those gathered here tonight and ask that you hold before us the vision of your will for us to enlighten our words and our actions. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Pastor Fisher, releasing the pledge, please.
Please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Option of the agenda. Changes, Ms. Garten?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. On page three of your agenda, we need to delete under Other Planning Items, number one, which is the discussion regarding flea markets because the applicant that was generating the need for this discussion has withdrawn their request. And then second, you have at your seats a proposed resolution honoring Richard G. Dick, who used to be a board member. And that would be, I think, appropriately added under the County Officials section as number three.
All right. Clear. We're removing Tab I under Other Planning Items at the applicant's request and adding Resolution as number three under County Officials.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Consent Agenda, items recommended for consent or tabs A, D, and K. Are there any additional? How would the board like to handle that?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Consent Agenda is adopted. Subportion of our meeting when we set aside time for citizens to comment on any issue, their agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
No. All right, thank you. For Supervisors' comments, are there any? That brings us to committee appointments. Sanitation Authority, Robert P. Mallory has resigned. Do you have a recommendation before you, an application of Christopher Collins to serve on the Frederick County Sanitation Authority Board?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, sir, second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Historic Resources Advisory Board, I'd like to bypass Parks and Recreation Commission. It's an at-large position.
Mr. Chairman, I did get some communication from Mr. Anderson, and he says it's time for some new blood on the committee, so we need to find a new person.
He's served us well.
He has.
All right, so we'll be thinking about that one. Lord Fairfax Community College, County Representative.
Do we know if she's willing to serve again?
We do.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the reappointment of Tara Wooliver to the Lord Fairfax Community College Board.
Motion to reappoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Tara L. Wooliver, County Representative, reappointed to the Lord Fairfax College Board. Mrs. Leonardis is not eligible for reappointment, so please give that one some thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe her appointment ends on June 30th. She's notified me that she's not eligible, and we're beginning the process to find a replacement.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Just Regional Airport. Term expires 6/30. I don't know whether we have contacted Mr. Anderson.
I can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, I think that brings us to the end of the committee appointments. Request of Commissioner Revny for refund.
Yes, sir. You have in your agenda a request from the Commissioner of Revenue that the Board authorize the Treasurer to refund Uniman Corporation the amount of $11,662.34 for personal property taxes in 2015. The refund is as a result of land purchased in 2014, which was inadvertently added to the company's list of assets on their machinery and tools filing for 2015. The request has been reviewed by the County Attorney, and we ask that you approve the refund and the supplemental appropriation in that amount.
Board like to handle the request.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve both, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries. Ms. Garten?
Yes, sir. You have at your seats a proposed resolution in memoriam of Richard G. Dick, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Frederick County, Virginia. Would you like me to read the?
If you would, please.
Whereas Richard G. Dick served the citizens of Frederick County, Virginia for four years as Chairman-at-Large for the Board of Supervisors from January 1, 1992 through December 31, 1996. And whereas Richard G. Dick helped promote Frederick County as a business location during his 32 years of service as a member of the Frederick County Industrial Development Authority, now known as the Frederick County Economic Development Authority, where he served as Chairman from January 2004 through January 2015. And whereas during his tenure, he held seats on numerous committees, including Chairman of the Winchester-Frederick County Economic Development Commission, Chairman of the Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation, Member of the State Board for Community Colleges, and a member of the Winchester-Frederick County Joint Judicial Center Committee. And whereas Mr. Dick helped negotiate a voluntary settlement agreement between the City of Winchester and Frederick County, which was instrumental in keeping the Frederick County government offices in downtown Winchester. And whereas Mr. Dick was a tireless worker for all of the citizens of Frederick County. And whereas Mr. Dick will be long remembered by those who served with him and the employees of Frederick County Government that worked for him, as a man who was generous with his time and personified love of community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its deepest sympathy to the family of Richard G. Dick, a true friend of Frederick County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this citizen legislator, and that a true copy of this resolution be presented to his family and wife.
Heard the motion, I mean the resolution, entertain a motion.
Move for adoption, sir. Mr. Chairman?
To adopt the resolutions, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Our deepest sympathies to the family.
And Mr. Chair, I want to thank Jay Tibbs for putting that together.
Yes. Thank you, Jay. All right, that brings us to the Finance Committee report. Supervisor Slaughter?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee meeting was held in the first-floor conference room on Wednesday, April 20, 2016, at 8:00 a.m. Let's see. The first item on the agenda was the Winchester Regional Airport Director request an airport operating fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000, and a general fund supplemental appropriation, local funds, or a general fund operational contingency transfer in the amount of $75,100 in order to cover the anticipated deficit through FY 2016. The committee recommends an airport fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000, and a general fund operational contingency transfer in the amount of $75,100, and I would so move.
The motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries.
And the next item on the agenda was the Deputy Public Works Director request a landfill fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,125,770. This amount represents funds required for the partial capping closure of Area 1, Phase 1, of the CDD landfill DEQ permit 591. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
The motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Slaughter, if they use this money, is there a method to replenish this further down the road, or is that not part of the discussion?
They do replenish the money from their revenue and their tipping fees, and of course, whatever is not appropriated and used goes back into their fund balance, which is where this money is coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that brings us to a public hearing. Outdoor Festival Permit Request of Charles Harbaugh IV, Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation.
The applicant is here.
I'm sorry?
The applicant is here.
Anything you'd like to add, Mayor?
Welcome to approach the event.
Shirley, please, please.
Chairman De Haven, members of the Board, County Administrator Garten, Charles Harbaugh, Mayor of Middletown, but I'm here today as a board member of the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. In your packet, you'll find an event flyer for the Battle of Meadow Mills. I'm in charge of finding new ways of revenue for the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. One reenactment a year is not enough, so we pursued this. It's going to be the first Revolutionary War reenactment in the Shenandoah Valley. It's going to be a big, big event. It's going to be tremendous. It's going to be small in terms of reenactors, but it's going to be a lot of quality. You're going to see a lot of things people haven't seen before around here. So everything's in your packet, and I would cordially request your approval of the event and welcome you to come, and I have a bunch of event flyers, if you like. Mr. Ruddy might want to participate on the British side, I don't know.
Well done.
That's all I had about the event. The fee is seven bucks, but that'll get you in, and it's very interactive, a lot more interactive than some Civil War events, so.
Great. Questions for Mayor Harbaugh? Anyone?
Just one brief comment, Mr. Chairman. Your advertisement is join or die. We expect Mr. Ruddy to be safely escorted to and from.
He will be. He will be. He's going to interpret for the British side, I think.
Excellent.
And to be treated with all due respect.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to comment concerning this application? Anyone at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Would the Board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman, since this is in the Back Creek District, I would like to recommend approval of the outdoor festival permit for the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation, Battle of Meadow Mills. Mr. Harbaugh has proven he is a veteran at putting on these types of events, and I know that it will be a quality event, and I have not heard any, any feedback to the negative of any events held in Middletown.
Have motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor, what's this, a public hearing? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Slaughter?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries, and the request is granted. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Then number two is the outdoor festival permit of Michael S. Collins, Renegade Dance and Arts Campout. Welcome, sir.
How are you guys today? Yeah, I'm applying for, for the festival permits. I've done this before. I did it last year at, I did it last year at Bud's Creek in Maryland, and before that I did it in Hedgesville. Both of those times I applied for different types of permits. Last year, the venue owner had actually, the venue owner had actually gone through and gotten the permits, but I did it in Hedgesville. So, yeah, pretty much, I'm expecting a turnout of about 200 or 300 people, though the maximum ticket sale would be 600 people. I would not have any other people come besides the people I sell the tickets to, besides staff, which might be, might be like 50 people. So I've done this for five years now, and, yeah, it's mainly just local artists and musicians. They come, they camp out. We play music until it gets late, and then we turn off the music. And there's a heavy emphasis on visual art and decorations, so we put a lot of our budget into the, into the, just the decoration. We get a lot of big abstract decorations and, you know, put them throughout the campsite. We try to provide a, you know, a pretty cool environment for people to come and have a good time. So I did, I did have one question. I was having trouble getting in touch with, with the medical department, and I was wondering if I had to go through the, through the Board to get my EMTs, or if, or not through the Board, but through the county to get my EMTs, or if I could hire some of my staff that have an EMS certification. That was the only bit of confusion that I had, I believe. I've been talking to the Barbara from the Fire Marshal's Office about, about all the other stuff. It's, I was just a little bit confused on the EMS situation, but, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say about it.
Questions for Mr. Collins?
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
What time do you expect to end in the evening?
What time do I expect to end in the evening? Well, it would go from, oh, you're talking about each night. Honestly, if we could go until about 12 or 2, that's usually when we like to, you know, wrap it up, but I understand different, different counties have different laws. It seems like you guys would only want eight hours of, eight hours of music, so, each day.
My only question is, in the evening with a noise ordinance, are you going to affect adjacent areas, or is it not going to affect adjacent?
No, sir. Actually, for the purpose of having outdoor campout, I bring pretty small sound equipment, so it's going to be, well, and we have decibel meters and stuff, we've, we've got a lot of equipment to do stuff outside. But, yeah, we have decibel meters. We usually keep it below, below like 50 at the, at the edges of the.
So the question is, does it affect anybody that lives in that area?
No, it won't affect anybody, and I will go around and talk to the neighbors and give them my phone number.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Other questions of Mr. Collins? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak concerning this application? Anyone at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Again, this is Back Creek District, to be held at the Cove Campground, and I have not heard, we've had other festivals in that area before, some with a lot, I'm assuming, bigger amplifiers than Mr. Collins presents here. So given the, I have not got any negative feedback, again, from anyone in that area. It is a fairly remote area, a lot of trees around there, so that helps cut down on any ambient noise or light that may be going on. So I would move to approve the application for outdoor festival permit for Mr. Michael Collins to be held at the Cove Campground in June.
The motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just, I know Mr. Dunn had asked about the time. I'm looking down here, start times at 4:00 p.m. and end times at 12:00, and then I heard something about 2:00.
Oh, should I not? Okay, sorry.
So.
If you want to change it.
Well, I was just wondering.
An amendment to the motion.
I was just wondering if, if we are at the 4:00 to 12:00. What, what is said on the?
What we're about to, the motion is to approve the application as submitted with the 4:00 to 12:00 midnight.
Okay.
Timeframe. Now, if you want to have a discussion about it, we can do that now.
Fine with that.
But if you want to change it, we'll need an amendment to the motion.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lofton, you're familiar with the area?
Yes.
So if they go to 2:00 in the morning, is it going to have any effect on people in that area or not, to the best of your knowledge?
I've not been up there 2:00 a.m. in the morning.
I understand that.
Thank goodness to know if there's any ambient noise coming out of the area that when they have festivals like, but I have not heard any feedback from anyone in the area when we've had the other festivals up there before.
Here's, here's my concern. If there's no people that are affected, I don't care how long it goes, as long as it's, you know, cordial, et cetera, but if there is, then I'd probably want to cut this, you know, before. So you know the area, I don't, so that's why I'm just asking the question, because if there are neighbors that, 2:00 in the morning, say, you know what, we need to get some sleep, that's fair, I would think you'd recognize that, but if there's going to be nobody affected other than the squirrels, then I'm okay with that.
Well, according to his permit, like Supervisor Wells says, 4:00 to 12:00 is what, if he goes beyond that, I'm sure if a neighbor realizes that there's noise coming out that's disturbing them, they'll be quick to call the Sheriff's Department, and Mr. Collins will find out very quickly.
All right. Thank you.
I think the only other activities going up there are the scout camp at that time.
Oh, is it?
I don't, I don't think they. That's summer camp for the scouting, starts in June.
I don't think it starts that early, Bob, because school has not.
That's true. School's not out yet. Exactly right.
Maybe they could join in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Join in.
I want to join in.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries. The folks at, at Fire and Rescue should be answer, able to answer your other question on your EMS.
Just keep in contact with them, they'll come out.
They can answer that, but ask them sooner better than later.
Yeah, whatever. I've ordered the permit and everything. I'm in the last.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Good luck. Public hearing, rezoning 02-16 of I-81 West Business Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is an application to rezone a total of about 155 acres of land from the RA, Rural Areas District, to the B-2 Business General, B-3 Industrial Transition, and M-1 Light Industrial Districts with proffers to accommodate both commercial and industrial land uses. Now I would note that this site is located within the limits of the Northeast Frederick Land Use Plan, and is also within the Sewer and Water Service Area. If I can direct your attention to the screen on your left, the subject properties are outlined in black. For reference, we have Interstate 81 in this location, Cedar Hill, and Hopewell, and then so the properties are in this area. Now, the Northeast Land Use Plan of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan shows the properties with a combination of commercial and industrial land use designations. Again, on the screen, this is the overlay of the Comprehensive Plan on the properties. The orange is a commercial designation, the blue, industrial. So therefore, the requested zoning sought tonight is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. With this rezoning application, the applicant has proffered, along with commercial and industrial land use allowances, that they will have no more than 6,330 vehicle trips per day. There's also a proffered monetary contribution to Fire and Rescue for a building square foot, and they have also proffered land for the sanitation authority to construct a ground level water tank. This is the proffered generalized development plan, just for reference. We have Hopewell and Cedar Hill. You have the B-2 portion here, the B-3 area here, and then the M-1 areas here, and the proffered roadway that runs through the property. And a little further out, just for reference, for the sanitation authority tank site, there's a tract a little further up Cedar Hill that that proffer applies to. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bishop, excuse me, Mr. Bishop, so he can go over the transportation components of this application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As Candace mentioned, probably the key proffer is the 6,330 trip limitation. Additional important proffers, if I may note, are the proffer of an 80-foot right-of-way for Alfalfa Lane, which runs through the center of the property, construction of two lanes of that eventual four-lane road, proffer to signalize the intersection with Hopewell and Alfalfa Lane, as well as the ramps between Hopewell and I-81. In addition, they have proffered, what you can see here, 60-foot right-of-ways for potential future ramp access, and if I may take a moment to go into a little more detail on what that is actually all about. If I can refer you to our Eastern Road Plan, when the Northeast Land Use Plan was updated, you see that what was proposed was a split of the interchange. Right now, as you can see in gray, right there underneath some of the red, you have an interchange of Hopewell Road that does not access Cedar Hill. During the study of the Northeast Land Use Area and the subsequent land use updates and transportation updates and modeling that were done as part of that plan, the split interchange ramp, the split ramp design was contemplated and adopted at that time. However, things happened in the meantime. If you allow me to zoom in again, we now have a church in the middle, we have a significant, significant cross structure, as well as a burial site. So that's, for lack of a more eloquent way to put it, thrown some of that into, into question. Now, one of our comments the first time around was that the applicant had not addressed this plan. Limitations aside, they had, they had not worked to address the frontage roads and that sort of thing. That's why you see these proffered here today, both here and on the northern portion, I'm sorry, yes, the northern portion of the site, as a potential alternative. Does it exactly address the Eastern Road Plan? No, not specifically exactly, however, you can see where the applicant was trying to address the comment. Additional comments that were addressed as this worked its way through the planning commission was originally the right-of-way was only going to accommodate 60-foot for Alfalfa Lane, it wasn't going to accommodate the full four-lane road. And while there was a signalization of Hopewell, the Hopewell ramps and Alfalfa at Hopewell, one of our concerns was that should something develop in the future, as things always do, we wanted some flexibility to perhaps convert that to a cash proffer, whether it be to use it to leverage state funds or, or perhaps economic development access, things like that. So the applicant has actually done those things, and now we are left, I apologize, I scrolled the wrong way, now we are left with only. scrolled the wrong way, now we are left with only these remaining comments from VDOT. Accommodation of split ramp system frontage roads, we did note that, while the applicant has tried to address that, this still isn't specifically dealt with, as it is our comprehensive plan. VDOT has requested that the applicant perform the signal warrants, when time seems to indicate that there may be a need for that. We don't want VDOT to have to perform that signal warrant analysis. And finally, VDOT requested that the turn lane improvements that would be required when Alfalfa Lane was constructed be also specifically proffered. Now, technically, you can require that anyway as you go through the process, which was part of the reason we didn't have a specific issue with that. However, there's nothing wrong with clarifying that as part of a proffer, and I believe the applicant indicated they're willing to do that at the planning commission level. Now, with that said, as I noted earlier, this did go through two planning commission meetings. The first was March 16th, at which time it was tabled to address some of the comments, which I've gone through with you on, and then it was once again considered on April 6th, at which time it was unanimously recommended for approval. Following your public hearing, we are seeking your guidance on this item, and we have Mr. Oats here to represent the application. Of course, I can take questions, as well as Mrs. Perkins.
Questions of staff, anyone? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bishop, when I read through this before, at the planning commission at the end, it talks about the fact that they had approved, but there was some hesitation, so my question is, has there been an update since then? I mean, is this something that VDOT is comfortable with, or they still have, it's not finished yet? Can you clarify that?
These represent VDOT's final comments that I've just pointed out, in terms of what remains outstanding, and that is pointing out that the applicant's proposed solution for the ramps is not specific to our eastern road plan, the request for the signal warrant analysis, and the request that the turn lanes that would be required with the construction of Alfalfa Lane be specifically proffered. Those are not in the current proffer, no.
So, from a staff perspective, having those in the proffer, they are not there now?
They're not there now.
You would like to see them there?
I think more specificity is always helpful, yes.
All right. And, Mr. Chairman, we're not, we're just going to have a vote in a public hearing, or we're going to vote on this actual item?
We're going to see about that after the public hearing.
So, the concerns are, the items that you've addressed, and those then, at this point in time, are not resolved. Is that an accurate statement or a fair statement? I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just asking the question.
That's an accurate statement, I guess. I was trying to point that out as items that have not been dealt with.
Okay. Two other questions, Mr. Chairman. Number one, there's a church involved, and there are also, when you take a look at this, there are other adjacent property owners. Do any of them have either strong comments for or against this?
I do not believe, from the staff perspective, I defer to Mrs. Perkins here a little bit, I don't believe we have been contacted by the church. Mr. Oats would have to speak more specifically, as if they've had discussions with it.
Are the church and the adjacent landowners aware of this, or not, to the best of your knowledge?
Send out adjoining letters to notify adjoining properties of pending land use applications.
So, they're well aware of what is potentially coming? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? Anyone?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, one other.
Yes, sir.
The five cent, does that cover the needs for that area, to the best of your opinion? The five cents for the fire and rescue?
Does it cover the need...
It was the five cent proffer per square foot that was designated for fire and rescue, I believe?
I couldn't answer fire and rescue.
Okay.
Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
With the current proffer statement, it is .05 per square foot. I would note that we don't have an actual figure of the impact, but recent rezonings have actually been a little higher than that. The applicant will also address that when he...
Thank you. Questions? Stretts, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary Oats with Gray Wolf, representing the owners. If I could scroll back to the three items from VDOT, and also about the five cents. I spoke to the applicants today. That is one thing we would like to put forth through the Board of Supervisors tonight. We would like to change that to 10 cents, to be consistent with other rezonings in the area. So that will be one change I would ask tonight that you consider to the proffers. Of the three items up there from VDOT, the first about the accommodation of the split ramp system for the frontage roads, we could not accommodate that, as Mr. Bishop pointed out, because we have a lake, a church, a cemetery, and a cross in the way. So, we'd be more than happy to show the road going up to the church property and stopping, but that doesn't solve the problem. So by bringing it around and tying it into Alfalfa Lane, at least you have a flow of traffic. The second thing was a warrant analysis, but before I get to that, I'll address the third one, that's turn lane improvements associated with the new road. Proffer 1A is written, says this road and any turn lanes required for this road connection would be built with 2VDOT standards. So, it is in the proffers. I don't know why they keep asking for it, but it's there in number one. As far as the signal warrant analysis, with the traffic that we're proffering, we weren't required to do any signalization agreement, because we weren't crossing the threshold where signal lights would be required at any of the intersections. And we submitted this and proposed this last summer to VDOT, and at the time, it was fine. However, on our first round of comments, it came back in December, they asked us to consider going ahead and contributing something, or doing some type of signalization agreement. I spoke to the owners, it's quite a bit more money to put up, but they agreed. On our second round of comments, that came back from VDOT, after we addressed everything that they had asked on the first round, they came back with some additional comments. And one of them was a signal warrant analysis, which is a fairly expensive study. And I don't know if it's in your packet, but I wrote back something to the effect of, gave you an inch, now you want a mile. We did the signal warrant, or the signal light agreement. To spend additional money for a warrant analysis, when our TIA shows that we're not even going to generate the need for the signal lights at this time, to me, is an undue burden. That should be down the road, when the traffic gets to a point that a warrant analysis would actually be needed. I mean, this thing could be 20 years away. So I didn't think it was appropriate for us to proffer that signal warrant analysis, and we have not. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I would point out one other thing. The transportation's a key factor here, but the tank site that was pointed out earlier, you might be wondering why it's so far away from the actual rezoning site. That's because we need a tank, from the county perspective, for water pressure. And that is the closest spot to 81, there's a cell tower on that hill. And where we propose the tank site at is just 10 feet higher than the minimum that we need to reach that pressure point for the water system. So the tank site's pretty important. Your next item on the agenda is going to be coming up about cutting off parcels for public utilities on rural preservation tracks, and I'll tell you now it's related to this, because right now in the proffers, we can only put this up as an easement. However, if the ordinance changes to where we could cut off an acre parcel, actually, I think it's an acre and a third, then the applicant could outright dedicate that parcel to the sanitation authority. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Oats, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One more. I'm sympathetic to your comment about not wanting to have to pay for a analysis that may not be needed down the road. Is the applicant amenable to having a cost, to having to pay that at some future point in time, if it's needed? I'm not good...
Again, we're not even creating enough traffic to actually put in signal lights. So we've already agreed to pay a portion of signal lights in the future. To ask them to pay for a warrant analysis, who knows when it could occur? No, we're not prepared to offer that.
Over a 20-year timeframe, your words.
Yes.
Do you expect that over that 20 years, the roads are going to grow, either because of this development or something else, where you're going to have a higher congestion, where that might be needed? And if so, then, if there were need for that type of study, who should pay? I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just asking the question.
In my opinion, when the next big development comes, they're going to have to also proffer a signalization agreement, and in their TIA, it's going to point out when a signal light is more than likely going to be needed. And at that point, that would be when a signal warrant is justified, the analysis.
Okay.
So, not to be kicking the ball down the road, but at this point, it's never going to be needed until such time as you approve another rezoning in the area, and then it possibly could be needed.
All right. Two other quick questions, Mr. Chairman. Question number one is, you heard Mr. Bishop's comment, you heard my question to him?
Yes.
I read this before I came in here, and that was one of the things that was just unresolved. So, do you have any thoughts or comments? I mean, is this a resolvable issue? You've heard Mr. Bishop say that, I'm hearing him say yes, some concerns. I appreciate your work on trying to resolve an issue around obstacles not of your choosing.
Right.
So, any insight, thoughts, you know?
Well, these are comments from VDOT for the rezoning. Two of them, we've definitely taken care of. The third one, the signal warrant analysis, actually, there was a judicial comment that came in that's not up there. When I told them no to the signal warrant analysis, they asked for a full analysis of the whole intersection area, which is about four times the cost that happens to include a signal warrant analysis, and I told them no on that, too.
I'm sympathetic to a private business trying to go and do a job without being hit hard, but I'm also sympathetic to citizens in the county needing to come through that. My last question is, I believe that you have a historic structure in that area, is that correct?
Yes, it's the Klein's house across the road.
I read that, I'm unfamiliar with it, so how historic or not is it, and is it affected by this or not? And is it...
It's owned by the applicant.
Okay.
It's where their mother lives.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, Mr. Oats? Yes, sir.
Sort of a question, maybe a comment. I see in your proffers that the owners proffered that the average daily trips shall not exceed 6,330.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure why VDOT's requesting the signal warrant analysis, given the fact that you've already shown the maximum impact you're going to have on that intersection roadway network.
Generally, I can't speak fully for VDOT, but it seems, even though when you proffer not to exceed a trip generation, they'll look at the project and try to figure out worst-case scenario across the board, and ignore the 6,000 trips, and try to make you address 18, 20, 30,000, whatever this thing could generate if we weren't choking it back. And I've found that several times over the years. They want the worst-case scenario every time.
But your worst-case scenario, you've pointed out to them as 6,330, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions, Mr. Oats? Anyone?
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One last question. Your knowledge, have any of the adjacent property owners raised any concerns? I've seen one letter that came in this morning, but it's not adjacent. But have any of the adjacent property owners, have they addressed, have any concerns?
No adjacent property owners have any concerns, to my knowledge. They've not communicated those with me. The church that you asked about earlier, they are actually on a temporary easement to access their property, and I believe they're kind of looking forward to when Alfalfa Lane comes down and actually touches their property. And they do have state road access.
Thank you, Mr. Oats, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Lofton.
Well, I'm sorry, not of Mr. Oats. Maybe Mr. Bishop could address it.
Okay, surely.
If Mr. Oats has finished.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir.
In dealing with the first bullet point up there, accommodation of the split ramp system frontage roads, I keep hearing about all these roadblocks, forgive the pun. Is there an opportunity to overcome those at some point in the future? Or, obviously, that would be expensive to buy, and I'm not sure you can even go through the cemetery, could you?
That's the real question. We have to keep a few things in mind, at least in terms of, you know, when you adopt a plan, how realistic is. It's important to remember that, when this was adopted, those things were not in place. However, we didn't control that right-of-way, things developed. Those things are significant roadblocks, maybe not completely insurmountable, however, given the leadership we've received from the board in the past, those don't tend to be things that Frederick County is going to go do, in terms of condemning right-of-way, particularly if you've got a graveyard involved, all those things. So, from a staff perspective, trying to look at it through that lens, I, without saying that what the applicant has proffered can certainly happen, we don't know that for sure, without not only VDOT, but federal approval, since we're impacting the interstate, I do think it's probably a best effort. Did that answer your question?
I believe, so, could we in fact use Alfalfa Lane as a substitute for those...
That's the way we're coming at it. Yeah, yeah, that's the way it's being looked at.
The intent of what they're doing here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
If I may take a liberty here, you were asking about the 6,330 trips earlier, and Mr. Oats made the point about VDOT and worst-case scenarios. That's rather an important difference between how we might look at it in Frederick County and how VDOT may look at it. We also do worst-case scenario, unless you're proffering to something less, as they are here. VDOT is a little more gun-shy of that, because VDOT recognizes that they're not a party in that proffer agreement.
Okay.
So, that's part of the reason for the difference.
Okay, thank you.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Bishop, maybe I should have asked this of Mr. Oats, but there's, church currently accesses their property from Cedar Hill Road, don't they, on a temporary, on a lane that...
Yes, Mr. Hess.
And I guess that my question with that is, Alfalfa going to roughly follow the current path of that lane, the Jeremiah Lane, or whatever it's called?
Yes, sir, actually, that portion of the road will probably become the pedestrian biker trail that's required to be built.
Okay.
And the Alfalfa Lane will be built adjacent to it. And that comes off of Cedar Hill. And as I said before, it's a temporary easement.
Yeah. Thank you.
Others? Yes, sir.
Clarification, may Mr. Williams. I think in the original letter or response that you had, there was something about the validity of or registration of an LLC, the blaine, has that been resolved?
Yes, the, I remember the issue, but I think it was actually reflecting the proper state of incorporation, and for purposes of the proffer statement, it's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Others? Anyone? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this application? Anyone at all? Yes, ma'am. If you could come forward, give us your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, I'm Darla Parsons Barrett. I'm in White Post, and I live off Apple Pie Ridge. And I volunteer, and my husband volunteers at the Clearbook Fire Department, so I'm glad to hear that the proffers are getting increased. But, my concern really is the Hopewell interchange, because we drive from Apple Pie Ridge quite often over to the Brewstown Road, and that's really a relatively small highway interchange. It's nothing like the Flying J. And that's my only concern, as far, even 6,000 trips a day, coming on and off both directions on that can be tricky. That's my concern. There's a lot of heavy traffic, truck traffic now, coming there to a relatively small highway ramp and overbridge. It's barely a two-lane, it humps, it has a train track, there's a dog leg, it's really, that's my major concern.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else to comment? Anyone? All right, we'll close the public hearing. This is Stonewall.
Okay. I believe the planning department had outlined in their application that it is consistent with the current land use supported by the comprehensive plan. It appears that the applicant has, to the best that they can, addressed the issues with the Collector Road on Cedar Hill, that some of the traffic will actually go out to Route 11, so that not all of it would impact the interstate ramps. I think they've addressed the consistency with the fire and rescue building square foot issues, and also with the number of trips. The 6,000 trips not warranting the signal warrant, if you will, because they've limited the number of trips to not... you will, because they've limited the number of trips to not have that affect this application. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion for approval of rezoning number 02-16 for I-81 West Business Park.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it as long as we're sure that the 10 cents is included in the proffer as opposed to the 5 cents.
I think it was duly, duly recognized in the minutes. Does that get us there, Mr. Williams?
With that representation, and as the board's motion is to accept it, with that representation, we're good. Then they'll submit a proffer statement that comports with that.
I think that was part of your motion, Supervisor Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
And second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve, and a second. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries. Res zoning 02-16 is approved with the proffer amendment. All right. That brings us to a discussion item under other planning items of ordinance amendment, dedication to public utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Perkins.
Members of the board. This is a request to revise the zoning ordinance to provide for an allowance to permit divisions from rural preservation tracks for public road dedications or utility dedications. Currently, the zoning ordinance prohibits all types of future divisions from these tracks once they're recorded, unless you're actually adding acreage to them. So before you tonight is a minor revision to provide an allowance for the boundaries of rural preservation lots to be modified, provided that, one, the future division, which is a subdivision action, would only be allowed for the widening of an existing VDOT-owned road. And I would note that there's a sheet before you that does have one word change. Before, it was an expansion. It's been changed to widening to just narrow that down. So I would note that's what that paper shows. And then the second allowance would be for the public utility dedications. So the DRC, which is the Development Review and Regulations Committee, discussed this amendment at their February meeting. The DRC agreed with the change and sent it forward to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed this at their April 6 meeting and agreed with the change and sent it forward to the board. So tonight, we are seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this is ready for public hearing, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Perkins? Mr. Fisher?
Would an elevated water tank be acceptable under this?
Yes, sir.
Without any question, it would...
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
Right, because it would be a public utility dedication property, same as a pump station that currently do small parcels.
Trying to picture where it would be, what that might look like, and what the neighbors may think about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Mrs. Perkins, is there some specific issue that has raised this particular amendment?
Well, this was an applicant request. It does correspond with the previous rezoning request, really to give the allowance for a possible tank site to be dedicated on a piece of property as opposed to an easement.
That was the catalyst for this?
That was the catalyst for this, yes.
Mayor Perkins, in light of Mr. Fisher's question, what other approval process might be involved for something like a water tank or anything? Nothing?
I mean, it would still have to go through the subdivision process. That subdivision, I believe, would have to come forward to the board. It would have to go through the sanitation authority approval process as well, as far as in...
Good. Thank you.
So I think staff's looking for direction, whether we think it's ready to go to public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a move that we approve staff to move us to the public hearing phase.
So a motion to forward to public hearings, or second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Anyone? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Brings us to board liaison reports. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, I have two things to mention. Try and keep my remarks brief. Number one, I had the opportunity to attend on April 20, the Business and Education Summit that was held at Laird-Floyd Fairfax Community College, put on by the EDA and both of the local school systems with several other partners. Thing ran from 8:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon, and it was an excellent session. I think the EDA staff was primarily responsible for putting that together. I think it was very worthwhile. The communication between the education community and the business community at that event was excellent. I think it was extremely well done. The other thing I would like to mention is I've continued to attend the community health forums that have been held monthly. And I'm going to distribute to the board members tonight just where they can find information on the library's website regarding the material that's been passed out. The last session that was held was last Saturday, the 23rd, and it was "Living and Dying with Our Choices: The Community Impact of Risk Behaviors and Narcotics." It was unfortunately not very well attended by the public. I really expected that there would have been more folks in attendance because there's some really outstanding information coming forward at these forums, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Dunn?
The Parks and Rec Commission had a meeting, most of which is in the packets we saw today. It's descriptive, but it did lay out changes, or not changes, but an update of the comprehensive plan and for the need to go and have further parks in the county. I think that's something that we need to pursue going forward. Secondly, the Planning Commission had an excellent retreat. Many of you were here, but that type of give and take, I think, is very profitable to everybody involved. Thirdly, Fire and Rescue Association had a productive meeting. They do provide a service to the county. We need to recognize that, especially in this apple blossom season when they're going to be going and having to do, you know, good help with a massive set of citizens visiting our town this coming weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Slaughter?
I would like to just compliment Mr. Tibbs in working with the Government Services Learning Project. I know many of us have had the opportunity to be at the schools and have the interaction with the students. And there were several at the Ailer School the day that I was there. We had students from Sharando High School interacting, and Millbrook High School interacting with the junior-level students and sharing how local government works. I thought Mr. Tibbs' presentations about, and trying to relate it to the students, was particularly helpful to them in understanding how all of this works. And some of the examples he used about the 60-cent tax rate on real estate, equating that to a $200,000 home, that their parents would essentially be paying a $1,200 real estate tax bill a year, and then asking them how much did they think it would cost to educate one student in the public school system. I think many of them were alarmed by the amount of $12,500 a year cost that it cost to educate a student in Frederick County, and what our citizens are getting for their dollars. So I'd just like to compliment him in the workings with the students. He did a great job, and I think it's, I'm sorry, we didn't have a program like that when I was in high school.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tibbs always does a great job, everything he touches. Supervisor Fisher?
I would just ditto that with Mr. Tibbs. That day, half the day I spent with him at Admiral Byrd, I'd get a feeling he slept real well that night when he went home. He has some interesting questions. You know, he asked the students, "How old did you have to be to speak at a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors?" And I don't know if you remember the three young ladies that spoke to us in the budget hearing? They were in a couple of those eighth-grade classes. It was kind of an eye-opener for a lot of them. So, well done, Mr. Tibbs.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to also thank Mr. Tibbs for doing an excellent job. He represents the county very, very well. As Supervisor Slaughter said, you know, he really interacts well with those students. He brought out what the county does. He asks good questions. I think the administrator should be very proud of the staff that she's put together. Mr. Tibbs is top-notch and did an excellent job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
If I may pile on, Mr. Tibbs. I too participated in that program. I thought it was a wonderful experience, both for me and I hope for the students involved. And I know the teachers were very interested in seeing that come to fruition. And again, Mr. Tibbs, with the information, as the other supervisors have tested, too, the information he gave out relating it to, in layman's terms, what those kids could understand, I thought was very well thought out, very well presented. And so I would like to also compliment Mr. Tibbs on the great job that he did, and I look forward to the presentations.
Absolutely. Others?
I'm afraid if I don't say ditto, I'm going to be accused of not supporting Mr. Tibbs.
Other comments? Anyone? All right. This is the portion of the meeting that we set aside for citizen comment on any issue, whatsoever. Does anyone have anything at all they'd like to share with the board? Mr. Oates?
Yes, thank you, sir. I've got a beef that it seems like every year I'm here about this time of year, and I noticed in the paper today, you're all, these raises are coming up for discussion next time. And year after year after year, you sit there and you say, "Oh, shucks, we don't need a raise." When was the last time you got a raise? It's probably been 10, 12, 16 years. Of course, I served on the sanitation board and planning commission. I think the planning commission rate's been the same for at least 25 years. You know, I don't put in the hours you all do, but, you know, I'm putting in 15, 20 hours a week serving the community on these different things. And it works out to be like $1.50 or $2.00 an hour when you figure it up, not including all the gas you spend. So next time around, don't look at it this year as you're getting a raise to yourself, but think about the people coming after you, because odds are, they're not going to vote themselves a raise either. And it's going to get to the point where the only people that can be on the board is someone who's either independently wealthy or retired. So think about that next time. I mean, well, let's see. Last year, I think I heard several times people say, "How can you look at giving yourself a raise when certain people haven't gotten a raise in a while, or they only get 3%?" Well, they haven't been at the same pay rate for the last 20 years. So please consider that next time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, anything at all they'd like to share with the board? All right. What are the supervisor's comments? Are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Lofton?
The resolution we just passed in memoriam of Richard G. Dick, I think speaks very well to the gentleman that I knew and respected. And in part of that resolution, it says that, number one, his personified love of the community and how he was a tireless worker, that indeed is very, very true, because Supervisor Hess and I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Dick just several months ago. And we know his health wasn't the best, but Mr. Dick had called us out there because he wanted to give us some ideas that he had about, again, working for the community, improving the community, and helping local government out. So to the very end, his heart and soul was given to promoting Frederick County and his love of Frederick County, and he will sorely, sorely be missed in this community as a person who was, again, a tireless worker and had a deep, unabiding love for Frederick County.
Well said.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dunn?
I knew Mr. Dick's from church, and Mrs. Dick's enjoyed. It's a sad day for her, so for those that you know her, just give her her condolences. I mean, this is going to be a really rough time for her. Her husband was a good gentleman. She's a good lady. She just needs her prayers. Thank you.
And Fisher?
I need to add some comments about Mr. Dick, because 12 years ago, when I guess I met him as far as getting involved in this with the board, you know, he sets a real example that this country could use to stand by. It didn't make any difference what the letter was behind your name. He treated you with respect. He encouraged you to be of service to your community, and he was just one fine, outstanding gentleman who was of the highest character and integrity. And I think our entire country could take a lesson from Mr. Dick right now.
Amen.
Other comments? Anyone? Vice Chairman Fisher?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.